Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the April 16th, 2025 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present this afternoon. Public comments. We had one register. Are we two now?
Madam Chair, we had two register, Mr. Eddie Stone and Ms. Sarah Shepherd. The item that they registered to speak about has been withdrawn. So that item is item 7B. The applicant's representative emailed this morning and withdrew that application. Mr. Stone has chosen not to speak today and to wait to speak when it comes back up again. Ms. Shepherd would like to speak, though, considering she rearranged her schedule to be here and does not know if she would be available when it comes back again. So if you'd permit her to do so.
Okay, and just to clarify, they withdrew the request just from the agenda for today. They didn't withdraw totally.
That's correct. It's not withdrawn totally. It's just from today's agenda. It's my understanding that their hope and desire is to be able to have it brought back up at our next day meeting, which would be on May the 21st at 1:00 P.M.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Shepherd, you wanted to come ahead and speak? And just state your name and address again for the record. Thank you.
Address, my phone, my name is Sarah Shepherd. My address is 2123 River Chase Drive here in Murfreesboro. And I'm the HOA president at the River Chase Townhomes. So basically, personally, I'm not at all opposed to the development of that property. I'm glad to see it developed. It looks much better already than it did. If I owned a property, I would develop it to make money as well. I don't know who wouldn't. Our only concern really is just that the courts got done prior to being actually approved. And had we had the opportunity to come and talk to you all prior to them doing the work, we might have tried to see if there would have been a way to put the courts on a different portion of that property. They're no further from our homes than one part of this room to the next than a few of the homes. And these aren't just courts people will be playing on. They are hosting tournaments. So we're talking, I believe there are bleachers. They've already had some people out there. And there were sound systems, loud music. They're going to emcee the games. So this is very noisy, potentially. In fact, I can hear the music inside my house with the doors closed when they had it going one day. They've also got extremely tall lights up that are very near our homes. It's my understanding they anticipate playing from any time early in the morning until late at night. So the lights also have the potential of interfering with the homes. So those would be the primary things would be the sound, the lights. We had asked for the fence, which it's my understanding from what I've seen, that's going to be put there. There were previously lots of tall pine trees, which had become deadly, actually, because they were dead and they were, had the risk of falling. We had sent certified letters multiple times to this property owner, asking him to take care of those. The limbs fell, they hit our houses, things like that. So I am concerned that whatever the planning commission makes him do in terms of landscaping and that sort of thing, you consider the size of what that landscaping is going to become near our property. He simply just didn't take care of it when it was not being used. It was kind of used as a trash dump. The trees became dead, all of that. So my concern is, once this gets approved, and I realize it's going to get approved, but in what form will affect what we have to live with, with this person and whomever may own it down the road? So if we can get the fence, if the lights, that sort of thing can be really taken into account by you all. I mean, I realize it's going through. This is not what we would have wanted right there, but it's going to go through. We know that. So just consider that it literally is feed from our home. I do wonder if the water has been addressed. We are taking on a lot more water than we were because they have raised the property. Even the Phase 1 portion has gotten raised. We take on a lot more water in that, that seems to be a surprise to you guys that the property got raised? Yeah, I don't know. But we, it's higher than it used to be. We watched a bring in the dirt, and it's higher than it used to be. And it slopes down towards a ditch that we spent tens of thousands of dollars already on, and we now take on a lot more water. And we do have some pictures of that. I'd be happy to send to the planning commission. Those are the things, I think, that really are our concern. Again, I'm happy to see it developed. I hope it's a wonderful success for them, I do, and for our city. Just some considerations with it being so close to our homes that are probably 85%, 90% senior adults. I think that's about it. And I may not be able to be back on the day it's up again.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Hope you can come back when it's up again. But we will try to remember each of these points and make sure there's something that we are ready to address when it comes back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. So our next item of business today is to approve minutes of the March 19th, 2025, and the April 9th, 2025 Planning Commission meetings. So we have had a chance to review those prior to our meeting today. If anybody had any additions or corrections, please let us know. Otherwise, we would be ready for a motion on the minutes.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, and then consent agenda, and same thing. We did get a chance to review that ahead of time. If anybody had any particular items they would like removed for further discussion, let us know. And otherwise, we would be ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Stay.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Moving on to the GDO portion of our agenda. First item there today is the La Quinta Hawthorne Hotel. Its initial design review for a 64,243-square-foot, 102-room hotel on 2.31 acres, zoned Commercial Highway and GDO 1, located along Cedar Glades Drive and Manson Crossing Drive. Krishna Patel and Rhenda Patel are the developers. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. This first item on your GDO agenda for today is the La Quinta Hawthorne Hotel. This is a 102-room, five-story hotel proposed for the intersection of Cedar Glades Drive and Manson Crossing Drive. As you can see in the elevations before you, this initial design review will be mostly focused on building architecture, materials, and colors. The image before you shows a good variation of colors, offsets, and building materials. The building base is a stone veneer with this, the corner area is a large format porcelain tile. The rest of the structure is composed of brick veneer, some additional stucco-type materials, as well as aluminum trim at the roof. HVACs are going to be roof-mounted and will be screened with multiple parapets, as you can see through these different elevations. And the architectural elevations are generally in good order. Staff only had very minor comments about that. We did want to mention that signage is not a part of this review and approval, just to make sure that everyone is aware of that as well. We did make some site plan comments as well to go ahead and get that process started. Did want to mention that the building architect is available today if you have any questions or if they have presentations that they would like to make as well. They're indicating they do not.
Can you just tell me, the windows are, what's the black at the bottom of the windows?
The black at the bottom of the windows are the air conditioning units for the rooms. And I'm, let's see if I can zoom. There we go. You're talking about these?
Yes.
Black rectangles? Yes, those have been painted to kind of blend in better. I believe those louvers are paintable where they can be modified. If you'd like to see those painted to match maybe the segment of the wall that they're in.
I guess it's just standing out, so I don't even remember. What do we normally see from air conditioning units?
We have seen that on several hotels in the past, where those are a dark color to try to blend in and not stand out on the hotel building elevations. We've seen both. We've seen them painted to match. We've seen them painted black to kind of blend in as more of a window surface.
Mr. Barbie, are those flush with the wall?
Yes, those should be flush with the wall surface. If not, the ones I've seen sometimes are slightly recessed a few inches just because of how the unit mounts in that wall section.
And Mr. Huddleston and his client may wish to come up and answer any potential questions.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Carrie Hydeman with Barnett Design Studio.
Barnett Design Studio, okay. And is this how the air conditioning units are normally handled on this particular hotel brand?
Yes, this is typical for most hotel brands.
Well, I don't know why they stand out so much. I just feel like I would have seen those a lot of other types, but.
So are they more of a vent looking?
It's a metal louver, yeah. And it's built in with the window. It's one unit.
That might have turned it up.
Oh, underneath.
Yeah. Except it would be connected to the window.
If the cable department could pull my screen up, here is a view of the Hampton Inn here in Murfreesboro on Thompson Lane. So I think this is kind of similar to what, the elements that you are showing in your plans, correct?
Yes, and it's correct.
So maybe it's just the black, or is that just your picture?
So our windows are a black aluminum frame.
Okay. Okay. All right. What other questions or concerns do you all have on this initial design review?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the Clary Park Townhomes Garden Area, Phase 1, Horizontal Property Regime plat for 21 single-family detached units and 46 single-family attached units on 17.66 acres, zoned PUD, GDO 1 and GDO 2, located along Wilkens and Pike. Ashton Nashville Residential LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and planning commission members again. This is the Horizontal Property Regime plat for the Clary Park Townhomes Garden Area, Phase 1. This is the plat that actually identifies and records the common space areas and limited common space areas. Also shows the footprints of the individual structures that will be constructed on the property. The plat is generally in good order, and staff requests that any approval be made subject to staff comments.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or concerns on this plat? This is just the Horizontal Property Regime plat.
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. And our last item under the GDO is Clary Park Lot 19. It's the final plat for one lot on 17.66 acres, zoned PUD, GDO 1 and GDO 2, located along Wilkens and Pike and Willow Oak Trail. Ashton Nashville Residential LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Yes, ma'am. This is the corresponding final plat to create the lot of record that matches the Horizontal Property Regime plat that you just reviewed. The plat's, again, generally in good order, and staff have requested that any approval be made subject to staff comments.
Any questions or concerns?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, moving on to our plats and plans. First item is the YMCA re-subdivision of lots 2 and 3. Preliminary plat for three lots and right-of-way on 9.51 acres, zoned Commercial Highway, located along North Thompson Lane. Green Trout Thompson Lane LLC is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. This preliminary plat before you is the current, or former YMCA property located along North Thompson Lane directly across from Walmart. As you can see on the plat before you, this will be divided into three lots from the one that it's currently now, and then the addition of a future road section to be named that will line up with what is now Sam Walton Drive. Preliminary plat is currently generally in good order, and staff have requested that any approval is made subject to all staff comments.
So a couple of curiosity questions, because I'm glad this, I'm assuming this is going to be a redevelopment of this property?
Yes, sir. The two southern lots, I know, or I've been told that they currently have potential developments for those two lots. And I know they are actively searching for a tenant for the northern lot as well.
The proposed public road, that, where would it connect going west anywhere, just out of curiosity?
Yes, sir. The alignment hasn't been finalized. However, it will lead down to Armory Drive.
Okay.
And I don't know if Armory will, I think Katie's coming, I think she has some new information, maybe.
The goal with this road is to move the intersection of Armory Drive now at Thompson Lane, to move it north and close that off.
Okay.
And so give that road access to this signal and close that intersection and hopefully make it a lot safer in the area.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
So this is something I think that came to our public infrastructure department, and TDOT wanted to do, and so we're trying to make happen with this project as well.
Very good.
Glad to see this. Hopefully, they get a tenant, but this is good for this parcel, for sure.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Drop pass it every day.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, and as previously mentioned, item 7B has been withdrawn today. So we'll move on to C, which is Mattington Preliminary Plat for 20 lots on 29.8 acres, zoned RS 12, located along Old Salem Road. Alcone Properties LLC is the developer. Hello, Mr. Donovan?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. So before you this afternoon is the 20 lot preliminary plat for Mattington to create, so begin the process of creating 20 lots and associated easements. So if you remember, last time, this was before the planning commission. It was actually before the planning commission as a rezoning, which you recommended to council on August 7th with two conditions that need to be met prior to building permits. Those two conditions were the replacement of the culvert under Old Salem Road and the Pocket Creek flood study being completed. City Council subsequently approved that rezoning on October 3rd. And kind of where we're at now with those improvements is the culvert under Old Salem Road has been installed and is, so that's in place. And the Pocket Creek flood study has actually been submitted to FEMA and is under review there now, just kind of a information so you know where those options stand as far as the approval of the plat. There are still some things in process. You'll have final plat, construction drawn and final plat before this is finalized. But staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. It's in general good order and recommends approval subject to staff comment.
This was the development that they couldn't start construction until the FEMA thing was finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the box culvert, they got put in by the city.
Yeah.
If nobody has any questions, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. All right. Then moving on to our new business, we have one item there today that we know of. It is a zoning application for approximately 14.81 acres, located along Old Lascasis Road to be rezoned from RS 15, 12 acres of it, and RS 10, 2.81 acres, to PCD. It's the Lascasis Storage PCD. Patterson Company LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and commission. As you can see on the screen above you, this particular site is at the intersection of Hazelwood Street and Old Lascasis Road. Those are both community collector roadways versus a major and a collector as listed in the staff report for clarification. It's currently zoned RS 15 and RS 10. The current parcel actually contains this full area, but they are excluding the existing house portion of the property that will be parceled off. And the monument site at this location will be within the PUD, but it will be on its own separate parcel for clarification. This particular area is also in our general plan, future land use map. It was an old rock quarry site, so it is currently designated SR, which is Suburban Residential, and PK for Park, which you can kind of see the outline of the old quarry pond that will be remaining on the site. We do have some mixed use to the south of that project site, so we may want to look at and discuss during the public hearing if it's appropriate deviation from the flum map because it is adjacent to that mixed use site, and it is a very difficult site. The reason for them filing the PCD is they would like to go ahead and provide a self-service storage facility. And our zoning code actually defines that as being a structure or a group of structures consisting of individual, small, self-contained units that are leased or owned for the storage of business or household goods or supplies. These facilities must meet those standards as listed in the zoning code, and all storage shall be indoors. However, the caveat in the language is, an area may be provided onsite to be used for outdoor storage of RVs, trailers, cars, and boats, but it does not really direct how much or specifics, so that will be some of the questions staff would like to clarify. Intimate 16 additionally also lists this particular because it's at the intersection, what we call a major intersection. They are asking for an exception to the code, which currently requires a 300-foot separation in any of the allowed zoning districts from the intersection. It would actually be at the intersection, so that's one of the first asks. And then the second one is, they are asking for outdoor vehicle storage within the site as well. And later for your discussion, you should have handouts of some revised architecture that was provided to us today. Again, looking at that rezoning request here in the map, 12 acres of the site, once you peel away that small house site, is currently zoned RS 15. And the back portion of the site where most of the wetlands are is 2.81 acres of RS 10. Scroll down to some of the context of the site. So we did, here's the layout plan. So as it's proposed, they show self-storage, kind of enclosed units at this location up front, as well as in the future in this three-story building, all of the yellow areas on the outside perimeter are covered parking in the form of like a three-sided canopy, two sides and a back with the roof. And then the interior is uncovered parking components. So they did forward us a revised fencing plan as we had a couple of concerns, but there was a neighborhood meeting that was held for this particular site. And part of the reason that it's very different is, one of the things that we heard was, it was very, they wanted adequate screening and buffering from those adjacent residential uses. So what was provided initially back in December was, there we go, this layout. And the reason for most of the changes, so you'll notice on the new plans, in this location, there's an additional covered canopy storage area, and that was to provide a solid screening along that southerly property line in addition with landscaping. But what they did with that change is they took out really these buildings here that were going to be mini storage units because all of these ones were actually facing Lascasis, which we have a policy that says no storage rollups towards the street. So this building was moved towards the front with only access from the rear side with 10 units of enclosed mini storage for the project site. So those were the, kind of the summary of changes. So some of them came out of responses to those neighborhood meetings versus some of the other responses were things that the occupant liked. We did include in the staff report kind of a comparison and contrast between number of units on that, but the first question that we're really trying to get to is, what is adjacent adequate screening? So this one drawing here, they have proposed some new additional screening, which before was, I believe, a chain link fence on the backside directly adjacent to where the RV, boat, or type of storage for vehicles could be in addition to the one that they show up in this front section. And so, again, one of the things that the adjacent neighbors were concerned about were those seen into the site where those facilities were. The other thing that staff is not clear on and hopefully can get some direction is a The other thing that staff is not clear on and hopefully can get some direction is how many units of regular enclosed storage versus open vehicle storage is the right number. Really, our code doesn't provide anything, but in the past, we've usually seen very small amounts of storage of vehicles on a site. And usually, they've been included with later phases of a site versus the first and second phases of the site. So they do have a phasing plan that is provided. See if I can work this little thing. So their phasing plan, the way that staff reviews it, and a lot of times, people don't pay attention to the phasing plans because, you know, they could go faster depending on what the market bears. But here, the intent is everything that you see in the colored areas would be with that phase. So where you see all the blue, that would be, you know, removed and replaced except for those areas that they show landscape preservation, which I believe is just in kind of this area in the front. And then there's some that is along the back section of the property in here that the program book says it's going to stay, but they're looking at only constructing this portion of the building. And so any future landscaping improvements wouldn't come until those future phases. And so you'll notice also up at the top of the screen, they do list kind of a breakdown of the types of units and basically your enclosed storage spaces for the property are just the 10 to 20 in Phase 1, and really, the remainder of them are proposed in Phase 3. They're looking at really most of the covered and uncovered parking spaces to be constructed with Phases 1 and 2. Phase 3 is specifically just the three-story climate-controlled building. As was mentioned, a neighborhood meeting was held, landscaping separation from the use, and that kind of far easterly parking areas were some, and light pollution where there are big concerns. We also received an update today on some of the other items within the program book. One was they requested a 45-foot height, and they're now proposing a 40-foot maximum height building. Staff thinks that's reasonable, and really what that is, is it's the side yard setback right here. So previously, staff had looked at maybe a one-to-one ratio, but here, they're looking at a 40-foot tall potential maximum height building with 30-foot at that point. And you'll notice there's a little bit different, you know, distance and separation here, so staff believes that that probably is a reasonable ask. But again, that's a planning commission determination. Secondly, they are looking at adding that six-foot tall vinyl fence in this area. Staff feels that that might not screen a 12-foot RV, so we may want a little bit more policy direction. And again, policy direction says that screening can include at the discretion of planning commission, earthen berms, masonry fences, or walls. In some of them that you see on primary streets, you'll usually see the masonry wall on the backside because everything's facing. Interior's kind of hit and miss, but we will say is that the adjacent properties to the south, those ones are single-story apartments up against the side. These ones could be condos, but I think they function as apartments, one and two stories, predominantly brick. Single-family residential, single-family residential. So from a context basis, there's a little bit of everything in there. So we wanted to give you a little bit of the adjacent. So looking at the top picture, this is if you're looking down Hazelwood. Actually, to the left is now a fully developed condominium project, but you would basically see that three-story building at the end of Hazelwood Street as it enters Las Casas. Over to the right-hand side here is this three-story apartment building. That would be directly adjacent from the proposed three-story mini storage building. This top one is the condominium project that would be roughly adjacent to the monument site. So you'll notice kind of brick facades on the side and what they call their front entryways, but then also a lot of hardy-type board. Here is the existing site for the monument. In talking to the applicant, they are agreeing to do a little bit more improvements, and they would provide a detail sheet on that in your program book during the public hearing. This site to the south is what's directly adjacent to that three-story structure on the site. It's predominantly, excuse me, it's predominantly siding, just a wood siding product on this portion with single story up against the property line and some two stories within. And again, here's that all-brick product in the middle that could be condoized, but we believe it functions like an apartment. And then the middle is the single-family neighborhood that's directly adjacent to kind of that last set of parking stalls that are proposed. And then this last one is the end of Scotland Drive, which is kind of the furthest away where the storage facility improvements would be back in this area and nothing at the, changing too much at the end of Scotland Drive. And then, architecture-wise, let me show you what they've proposed in a revised architecture. So as staff was working with them, the original program book that you have actually proposed along, there we go, it's very touchy, along Las Casas. The top drawing is what you would see along Las Casas, but there is a landscape area in front of that. Originally, they proposed some corrugated metal in those kind of lighter gray sections. And here, they proposed hardy. Corrugated metal is actually a prohibited material for us in the city, and so they've removed that from that section. But they do show this kind of hardy board. And if I zoom in, we can see it a little better, along the frontage. So there's no changes in the, you know, vertical plane above the roof. And then on the interior side, you would see this portion that's on the bottom where you would park the vehicles under this canopy. And then to the left is those interior enclosed storage facilities. I have not asked whether or not these could potentially accommodate vehicles or just household storage goods.
Either or.
Okay, either or. Because I think it makes a difference for fire codes. If it has fuel loads and it's enclosed, they may have to do sprinkling if it's a fully enclosed structure. And they also have proposed a caretaker's quarters onsite. And I believe with their phasing, the office will be in kind of the caretaker quarters initially, and then would be moved into the main building when Phase 3 is built out. And then on the sides of the building, you can see that water table brick continues around the side and the top. But when you look at the percentages, the percentages don't have brick as the primary material. And usually, the building, especially the facade that faces the right-of-way, even if it does have landscaping, it's hard to tell here whether there's 30 feet or 40 feet or so of landscaping, whether that's, what time of the year, whether it can be seen all the way through. And then on the side is kind of that similar lean-to building, but here, they're proposing kind of that metal panel on the upper portion and brick on the southerly portion, and that would be adjacent to all those residential apartments, condos slash apartments, and single-family residential homes on the southerly side of the property, which staff doesn't believe that that meets the design guidelines. So if you have some direction you can provide today, that'd be great. And then you can see the rendering here of the three-story primary building that staff believes still, again, needs some work to meet the design guidelines. And then when we look at some of the adjacent storage facilities, now, the design guidelines have been in place since about 2017, I believe. Here's some of the existing storage facilities that we have that's built after the new design guidelines were put in place, and none of these are actually in GDO. The top one I actually thought was GDO. It is not. It's just straight CH zoning district. Usually, in our planned developments, we have better quality of materials. But there's one over on West Northfield. Here's the one on Las Casas Pike, predominantly all brick, lots of glazing, and more of a residential scale. One over on Rutherford Boulevard, that again, has a little bit more of a residential scale of a building instead of a block square. That same storage facility, this is the portion that faces Las Casas. So you can see, of course, this one has a very shallow setback, which would be a little bit different at this particular site. And then one of our larger-scale buildings, this one though, is over there by Costco, directly adjacent to Highway 24, which is much more industrial in size and architecture. So we think that, you know, the building could use a little bit more what I'll call neighborhood touches to help it integrate better with the neighborhood. I think we can work on that, but it will take some more work to get it to meeting the design guidelines. So with that, I think I've covered the, oh, last high-level item. I'm looking at my notes. When we went to that phasing plan, one of the things that we noticed is there wasn't very much landscaping within the central portions, but there's a quote that talks about that island parking landscape that you would normally have would have an alternative plan. We would want to make sure that we would just list something that kind of this front area is more heavily landscaped, especially since before the third phase, your view shed into the site would be like this. So we would want to make sure that we keep trees appropriately in that particular area so you're not just seeing all of the parking area with that initial phase. And then we probably need some clarification on other landscape areas that will either stay or go during Phase 1. So with that, the applicant team is here, as well as their engineer for questions on it, but staff would really appreciate your guidance and direction.
Yeah, and I think just to build off of what Ms. Smith was saying, I think in particular, we would like y'all's guidance on the phasing and whether or not the planning commission is okay with delaying the construction of the principal structure until the third phase, or if that's something that is, that y'all may want to have further discussion on. Also, with respect to the architecture, particularly the rear of the building facing the residential uses to the south, having, has kind of a commercial or industrial feel, and it's in such close proximity to the existing residences. So I think really, really, we're looking for guidance from y'all on this one. After we discuss it today, if y'all feel that either the direction that they're going is the right direction, or that the, if there are challenges, if those challenges could be overcome in time for the public hearing, which we have an extra week this time, our public hearing date is May the 7th. So if you feel that we can, if this can get where it needs to go in time for the public hearing, then we would recommend the May 7th public hearing date. And one thing that I did want to mention, something that we actually reached out to the applicant's team this morning, is that we feel that before the public hearing date, it's important to have another neighborhood meeting, since the plan has had some significant changes since what went before the neighborhood back in early December. And so the applicant has agreed to host another neighborhood meeting prior to that May 7th public hearing date, and of course, staff will be there to help facilitate that. You know, we just really want to make sure that those neighbors who saw one version of the plan see the updated version of the plan before the planning commission takes action on it at its meeting.
I'd be just more than happy to start this discussion because I'm very disappointed with what I'm looking at today in light of what we saw originally when this was presented to us, and I believe it's what the neighbors saw. I have so many problems with this. I definitely would, I won't say never, but I do not like at all the fact this proposed three-story building in Phase 3, when you're going to put in a whole parking lot of RVs and think that we might wait five years, 10 years, whenever you decide to do Phase 3. I would never do that. That building would have to go in, in Phase 1 with any plan, anything similar to what we're looking at today. Basically, what you've presented to us today is 10 storage units and a parking lot of RVs. And we have a lot of, you know, covered parking along the edges to try to buffer these residential neighbors, but again, the buildings themselves won't buffer the size of the RVs that they're looking at. The very back section, I would definitely want covered parking and/or all the buffering to continue around the corner so that the people to the east, I think it would be, the south and the east in that far right corner, aren't looking into this whole land of RVs and/or boats, whatever is going to be out there. I think there definitely needs to be a very major landscaping, big island somewhere at the beginning that's basically going to screen, looking in from Old Las Casas into this. And I realize the RVs have to be able to get around it, don't want it to all get ruined. But I'm sure you can figure that out, but whatever would normally have been landscape islands that would be required in this type of development, I think you could take that amount and put it all up at the front to buffer from the road. I'm not in favor of any, you know, exceptions of five-foot buffer or you need five, you know, 20 feet instead of 25 feet when you've got all this space for nothing but parking. You can certainly put some more buffer on the back of this covered parking garages that you've got along the edges. I'm just, I'm just so disappointed in what I thought was going to be a fairly good plan for property that, you know, I'm not really sure what else might have been done with it. And then it looks like, you know, just trying to do the very absolute minimum or less with this project that we're looking at right here today. So I would have a real hard time with this if we were at the public hearing right now and trying to approve something like this. So I definitely agree, there needs to be another neighborhood meeting so you can hear from the neighbors. Maybe they'll be nicer than I am. I doubt it, but, you know, we usually, I won't go into all that. You know where I'm going with all this, and that's just my thought. And I'm, like I say, I'm just disappointed as far as the architecture goes. I think SEC knows exactly what we need for any plan that we're looking at like this, anything that is supposed to be even remotely GDO-type or requirements for the city. I don't think I can sit here and tell you anything that you don't already know on that, but I think you probably know we're not happy looking at what we're looking at. So I will be quiet and let you hear from the rest of the planning commission.
I'd like to add, what's the purpose of keeping the rock wall and that fence? It looks like it's got another existing fence that looks like it's predated.
So I think the property owner wanted to keep that in place around his property.
Matt Taylor-Buss, he said, that's right. The property owner does not want to sell. He's had us draw the boundary at his rock wall, and so it's not part of our project. We can't do anything with it because the current property owner wants to retain that for his own. for his own privacy, whatever his purposes are, but he wants to retain that. He's not willing to sell that.
So I'm just looking at the picture that's presented, number 78, shows a picture of the rock wall with a little small chain link fence, so that was my question.
You're talking about the monument area on the front?
On the back. Now, so on this one here that I've got up on my screen.
On the north side.
Yeah.
So you'll see right here, existing rock wall to remain. So it actually comes along this whole site, and the rock wall without the chain link on top actually comes across the front and the other side of the property as well. But the property owner has said he's had many vandals jumping his fences to get to the Rock Quarry pond area. Now, what people do out there, I don't know, but all the neighbors said it's horrible, it needs higher fences, but in that area, he wanted to retain what he had, which I think might have been built during the times of the Rock Quarry.
Right. Just when it says existing rock wall to remain, I thought it was part of this project.
And before we go much further with this, as I have in the past with any developments that have been adjacent to this neighborhood, which is the neighborhood I live in, or one of the neighborhoods that is adjacent to this I reside in, I'm going to abstain from any discussion and/or vote.
Yeah, I think I have to agree with Madam Chair, because we're just voting on allowing them to build a big parking lot at this point. So even with the building and everything, I don't know. But makes it pretty easy not to love the project as it's currently proposed. Did they say what approximate dates they looked at doing Phase 2, Phase 3?
I would ask the applicant to maybe address that.
Jackson Nichols Patterson Company, the phasings are all based on market conditions.
Thank you.
Would you want to put a timeline?
We would definitely have to.
That's what I was about to ask, if you are to.
Time hangs in there, and approve whatever phasing we might agree to, you know.
Is it okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Patterson, come up.
Can I draw on you? Okay. So I'd like to, Wes Patterson with Patterson Company. I'd like to address your comments, because there are all reasons behind everything that we've proposed. One of the things that's unique about the site, and all of you are aware where the site is and what it looks like, everything in here, for the most part, is evergreens. And I don't think we would be doing the site if it didn't have the evergreens already, because you could not afford to landscape this somehow and not see RVs, boats, or whatever that may be, or buildings. So that green area, which we have photos of, right? So one of those things is the sightlines and everything, and looking into the property, its majority is blocked by trees. Again, no way you could landscape over that. So we felt like that was a benefit and also the best use for the property. When you get into the phasing and why, it is market driven, and when you look at this investment, the research that we spent a lot of money looking at, it's a little bit saturated in that area right now with storage facilities in general. To us, this is a classier facility for that, but that's the way you would phase it out, is the area is growing, I mean, you guys, leaps and bounds all the time. That will come. Does it come in a year? If that demand's there, then you build it. If not, then it will be out in time, because it is a heavy investment. This, we believe, is the right investment, which is that storage is not out there. And with the tree buffer and everything around it, with the rock, the limited, very limited of blasting in the area with any other kind of development that would come into this location would be quite a bit. It was limited, and I think that's why Holly, that went over pretty well in the neighborhood meeting, that someone's not blasting a road in and utilities and everything else all the way to the back and putting in housing pads. So that basically granite shelf of rock there, it does become a parking lot, and it is that. And it's being used for other things today, and a lot of this design goes into kind of hopefully helping that. There is fencing along there, because you have to protect that investment. I mean, you see all the time where people are accessing areas like that. If someone's large investment that's sitting on your property, you have to keep them out of that. So that's the fencing. The trees help buffer that fencing, so I just wanted to speak to that. While I'm up here, are there any other questions that I could address? You might want to delete my sketching.
Let me delete, and then I figured maybe I'll just bring up the phasing plan.
Do you have any of those pictures from the outside too, with the amount of trees?
Yeah, so in the program book, you can see, so right here on the top right-hand corner is that intersection 9 at Hazelwood, all the way down the buffer area, but let me go So you can see the proposal, so the area in red is a Type C buffer at 12 feet. The blue areas are the Type D buffer on those sites that are adjacent to single-family residential zoned property. And then the yellow portion is the elevation to be used with buffer in conjunction with preserving existing trees and supplemental plantings to fill in the gaps. And I think staff, as we were looking at some things, the biggest gap is actually right here at the beginning, which actually is in both Phases 1 and Phases 2.
Is that the one that's adjacent to the apartments there?
The second set of apartments area, so that.
And so you're saying, right there, the, in the area just beyond that on the yellow, with all the existing vegetation that's already there, when you build all those units and you're in there doing construction, none of that would come down?
Yes, ma'am, we're behind that and wanting to maintain it, because we don't, if we go in there and rake that out of there, then we would have to go in on top of rock and plant material and everything else that still would take time to grow.
And what happens if you want to keep it, but then it just doesn't happen when you...
Well, that would be a bad job by us.
Because that's what happens a lot with construction, right?
Hopefully not with us. But yeah, I mean, if you're wanting to save 15 feet, if you're wanting to save 30 feet, you better save more than that.
I just, I want it to be, you know, so it's not, I mean, the people at, you know, when you're at your house or your apartment, your, the residential areas beside it, the buildings are set far enough away so that the vegetation, the buildings are going to help screen and prevent them just looking right over them at all of the potential RVs that might be sitting back there.
Okay, so some of the things that we changed from the original neighborhood meeting was based on comments. Matt even said, hey, things will change based on your comments, and help me, Holly, address this if I miss something, but this was added. And I believe, Madam Chair, you said you'd like to see this extended in this L?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's fine with us. We'd be happy to do that. Actually, Jackson went out there with a drone, flew it, looked at the heights of the tops of the trees versus where an RV would sit, correct? You have those photos, or we can get into that later if you'd like to. That was added. We left all this area green back here for a buffer for here. Only thing that changed up here is we took that building and pushed it back to here so the back would be against there, and still there's green evergreens along the road, so really, you should not see that. This view shed, these trees wouldn't be disturbed until that third phase happens, so you would leave those. And so again, as Holly was showing this triangle earlier, that's the triangle. So again, that would stay green until you go in there and do your third phase. So it's a blessing that the trees are there, otherwise, I'm telling you, we wouldn't be here. We just wouldn't do it, because you would see a sea of fence and RVs. You would never be able to protect that. And we thought it was, you know, and again, a lot of feedback has been, this is the best use for the property.
Yeah, so just to confirm, like you were saying, you're not going to go, you're only grading Phase 1, paving it, all of that. You're going to leave that triangular section that's wooded now where the proposed building is, you're going to leave that to your rate of building it?
Yes, sir.
I might need to change the phase.
Tell me, is it not going to get cleared right out of the gates? I mean, I think that helps some when they do clear it.
So I think what I hear you saying is that this area here would not be touched.
Even with the, where the proposed building envelope would be, that whole triangle, right?
So would this portion be Phase 3?
So if you... So you see the part, the dark green down there on the screen, so that's always going to stay green. You know, we don't want to knock down those trees. The same thing in front of the building. You know, those dark green areas are existing trees that we don't want to touch. The more trees he's got knocked down, the more money he's spending, and it just doesn't make sense when they provide a really, really, really good buffer, and we have the flexibility to leave those trees. That's one of the reasons that we gravitated toward this sort of use. You know, if you go in there and you're trying to build residential houses, you're probably knocking down every tree and you're blasting for six months, and, you know, that was one thing that the neighbors really, really liked, is, and we can minimize blasting with this, because we don't have to run utilities everywhere with this. And we can sheet drain back to, you know, the existing pond and treat it before it gets in there. And so I think that by Wes's commitment to encapsulate this end, this eastern end with a covered storage, you're not going to see these things, you're not going to see this stuff at the end of the day. It's a fully encapsulated property. There's going to be one little window if you're, as you're driving in, that you're going to see what's back in there, but you're never going to block that when you're doing a straight-in drive. And no, I don't want to clear that.
Would you take out those four parking spaces on the end of that first long island of parking and make that match?
If you think that would help, I think that we could take those out and put some landscape in there. I don't think, yeah, I think that if we think that could help, we could certainly do that, Ms. Jones. I think that's relatively easy for us to do.
Sam, you'll see straight through the face.
I'd be interested in hearing the comments from a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, for sure, we're going to have the public hearing, but I think they need another neighborhood meeting, but.
Yeah, and the neighborhood meeting was...
You know, it's just so different from what, I mean, originally, I thought it was a good plan, and I felt like it was, you know, good for the property, and it just feels so like now it's just nothing but 10 storage units and a parking lot. So it just is so different than what I originally saw and thought was going to be a good project, so.
Well, I think it still will be a good project, Ms. Jones. I think it'll come in a little different phasing with that, you know, we're proposing a little different phasing with that three-story building coming after the fact. We have seen several of those, as Ms. Smith put up here. We've not, you know, we've been so tight on where people can store, you know, we've not provided places for people to store their boats or RVs or cars. And each of us have seen, lots have gotten tighter, people don't want the yards, and people don't want this stuff stored out in their driveway, and so we really need to be providing a place for that to occur, and we really have not, the market has not met that demand. And I don't, you know, maybe that's some of the municipality, I don't know the answer to that 100%, but I think this helps a gap in the market. And it also helps, you know, with today's financing, you know, get some cash flow, get something going on the property, and it makes it a whole lot easier to build that three-story building in the future. We do think the market's there. I mean, you look at, the primary housing use around us is MTSU students. I would say that's in abundance. And that was one thing that we heard when we started looking at this property, is we don't want more rental houses out here. And I think this provides a service to some of those rental houses, so that they can pack their stuff, they don't have to haul it back home when they leave in the summer. But it does not provide more of that, more student housing, and it secures the site. Where it's being abused and misused today, it takes, it will take care of that problem, because there are some less than desirable uses that happen on this property today. But we can work on the storage, you know, screening that on the rear and that landscaping, and we can even look at the architecture a little bit, Ms. Jones, if you've got some specific there that you'd like. I don't think we ever mind looking at things.
And I think, speaking of architecture, that is definitely one of the things that we wanted to get y'all's feedback on, if there are any adjustments that y'all would like them to make prior to the public hearing on the architecture. I think, like I mentioned, we do have an extra week this cycle, so hopefully, any feedback you give them, they should be able to accommodate.
Well, they know that I can't tell them what they need to do. I only know if I like it when I see it. I'm not good at the suggestions. I just feel like we've, you know, we could certainly see some improvement.
Can y'all give us some feedback on...
Want to be like more on the residential kind of feel aspect? Is that what you're looking like? The Rutherford Boulevard one, can you pull, do you have that one, the example of that one on Rutherford, across from Aspen?
This one?
Yeah, that's the one on Rutherford Boulevard, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the other one's on Lescasis. So same company, store place.
Right.
Two totally different architectures.
I mean, what are y'all's thoughts on something like that, more of a residential?
I like the one on West Northfield better than...
So what you're looking at right there, what these pictures are is the manager's office, and so if you look at ours, our manager's office, it's, I mean, it looks like a, I mean, it looks like a two-story house.
Yeah, okay.
And so, yeah, and so I think if you compare those, you know, I think they have a different, they have the same style, except for, you know, if you look at the one on the bottom, it's a split-faced block with metal roofing, which I don't think any of us would classify as residential.
Mr. Taylor, would you mind scrolling up? I think Ms. Jones mentioned a second ago that she liked, or I should say scroll down then, liked the one on Northfield.
You know, it just feels new, or, I don't know, maybe it's too modern or whatever, and it's more similar to what you've got, maybe it's just the colors, just they're so dark. And again, it might be the printout versus the actual.
That's what I was thinking was, it may, that our colors are definitely darker than that. I mean, it's a darker gray and a darker red brick here.
Have we lightened up the brick or something, Matt? I mean...
I don't think we mind looking at brick colors. I mean, I don't think you care, do you? So I think we can look at some lighter brick colors on that.
I mean, maybe that would make it look a little...
And I think that, you know, these look like windows, I'm pretty sure those are spandrel, and they're trying to meet some void space, which is what we're trying to do with that Hardy panel right there, which is still a good quality product there. So I think we could look at some lighter colors, I don't think we mind that. If we could find a blue, a blue brick, maybe, go well over there.
What about the roof line? What about the roof line? What about the roof line?
The roof line...
Straight versus giving it a little?
Uh, how, how long is that building?
You don't have to do all of that, but...
Do you know how long the building is? The three stories?
Can we pull up the picture, the drawing showing the position of the building? Because I like the fact that it is secluded from the street. You're going to keep some trees and on Liscassus, then the backside of this property. I like that part of it. I do think that the neighborhood could use some storage, just a lot of rental property, apartments over there. And I like the fact that it's going to be convenient for some people to store. Like, my biggest concern was, is with the fact that the market is gauging the last phase of the building. So what we're really going, because we're approving it going from RS10 to RS, you know, RS15, RS10 going to PUCB. And they don't sound like they committed to phase three. So that's my biggest issue. I like everything else besides that.
Matthew, what would, I haven't been on here long enough to ask. I mean, when you get into like a multi-phase kind of planned deal like this, I mean, what do y'all typically, y'all typically put like time limits on when they have to have it built out all the way? Or, I mean, like, how does that?
So, you know, one thing that I can remember is the, on Greenland Drive, the multifamily and commercial, we timed the, or attended to time the CFOs for the multifamily, no early, or no earlier than the CFOs for the, for the commercial. I'm trying to think about way, creative ways to do this other than just putting a, other than changing the phasing or putting a, an absolute timeframe upon the construction of that building. I think, Mr. Taylor, just to be frank, I think one concern of staff's and of the, and I would assume of the planning commissions is that, is that phases one and two get built, but phase three never gets built. And, and then, you know, we're truly left with primarily a facility that's for primarily boat and RV parking with, without a real like principal structure on the property. And so I think we're looking for, I think the planning commission is looking for assurances that that building will get built in a timeframe for when that building will get built. Am I...
Yeah, maybe it could just become a part of phase two and not, not have a phase three.
Well, I'll go back to the fact that we have, we have seen several of these buildings built over the past five to 10 years, a lot, a lot of those buildings. I don't think it's an oversaturation, but we've seen a lot of those. We've not seen much of this parking. And so that's, whenever we did our market study, it showed a demand for that. Now, if it shows a demand, if it still shows a strong demand for the three-story building like this before our phase two, then, I mean, certainly, my client's in the money, in the business to make money. And so he'll, he would accelerate that. He'd just ask for a minor deviation to put the three-story building in before he did the back parking. But if we try to manipulate the market too much, then we end up with a failed project with an empty building that doesn't do any of us any good. And so I think that we're trying to react to the market and predict some of that future market as well. And I think that's why you see our client wanting to try to say, hey, we'll do this, but it's going to be down the road whenever some of these other facilities fill up and we have a more, a stronger demand for it. I mean, how many times have we talked about office and corporate offices in this very room? And, you know, that market just does not seem to be there for us yet, unfortunately. And so when we try to force and change the market, it just, I don't think we have that ability. We can meet market demands, but I don't think that we can change the market.
So let me ask you this, Matt. Like, would we do like a subdivision where you would have off-site turn lane improvements would be associated with a specific CO on a house, like Lot 50 or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, I mean, or Matthew, whatever, I mean, is there anything we could do along that? Like, if they hit a certain type, certain percent of usage that would trigger them not being able to fill it all the way out until the building is built? I mean...
I think short of modifying the phasing plan, there would be, from an administrative standpoint, there would be really no way for us to know...
When they hit that threshold?
Yeah, whether they hit that threshold.
Again, I like the project. I was just kind of struck by, you know, the market dictating the phase three. I was struck by that. But as far as this area, I like the fact that it's going to serve use to the community right here. I like that part. And I'm good with it, and I like the fact that they keep a lot of trees in this, the first building, it's not on the main road. So I like it.
Okay. I'd just say, basically, of course, we, no, our goal here today is just to provide feedback before we set a public hearing to our initial thoughts on this project. And so I think you've heard a lot of the concerns of the planning commission from a lot of different areas and different views. And they, anyway about it, we're, we need to schedule a public hearing and we will...
Madam Chair, may we get y'all's feedback on one, on one more item?
Yeah, we missed something. Can't believe it.
Just with regards to the architecture, the south elevation of the open storage building?
Open storage building.
So that is, that is the facade that's going to be facing the apartments to the south and facing the subdivisions to the south?
Mm-hmm.
And so it is brick on the bottom and metal siding above it. And so I think that we have some concerns about that in proximity to the adjacent residential uses. You know, even though there'll be vegetation there, I think there's, there, you know, will still be some visibility likely. And was curious what the planning commission's thoughts were on, on that particular elevation.
I mean, you got the vinyl fence on the southwest side. I mean, would you want to just wrap it all the way down and tie it into the security fence in the southeast and just line that whole property? I mean, how far off of the, how far off of the property line is the back of the building going to be?
I think they're 25 to 30 feet. And I'll share with you, while we have that material there, it was knowing who our neighbors are and the way that the property is being abused today, we can foresee some abuse on the back of these buildings and some artists taking some freedoms on the back of our building. And so we're thinking that the metal is easier to maintain and clean. If you disagree with that, my client's willing to change that metal to the hardy that we're using on some of the other buildings here. I think it's a material that you're probably more comfortable with, but that, that's why it's shown. It's a maintenance, it's a maintenance thing.
I would think that would help with, I think the sound is also going to be, you know, I think it would help to buffer some sound from that side as all these larger vehicles are maneuvering around the site as they, you know, I know they're not coming and going all the time, but with the number of them that are going to be in there, they, it's going to be quite a bit of coming and going at any given, given time. So I would think something a little more substantial than just the metal in that part would certainly help. And it would also help with the, just the general look of the building.
We can, we can just change that to the hardy to match the other elements on the side.
Is that what y'all were looking for? Was, you just didn't like the material or you didn't think it just, using it as a substitute, as a buffer? You didn't like that wasn't?
I think we were, we were, our concern was having a material choice or a design that was more compatible with the adjacent residential uses. And there are multifamily residential uses, there are also single-family residential uses adjacent to those buildings.
We could probably go to the wood that's next door. I've got to figure out how to use this thing. And we'll look, we'll look at the brick colors on that, too. That's pretty dark. I think if you get a little contrast right there, you'll, you'll see the base of building that you're accustomed to as well.
And so these buildings will be 16 feet in height. And is that, just, just, just so I have some clue, how tall is an RV?
They're probably like 10 to 12 because they've got to fit under a bridge. And your bridge clearances are 13, 6.
Okay.
From a wear standpoint, the brick and metal, they hold up a lot better than hardy.
From a water perspective, I think you're probably about the same. It's, it's just the, just anticipating what might happen on the back of that building because it is one spot that, you know, will be a little darker in the evenings, very purposefully so we don't intrude on our neighbors. And so, you know, it could be primed for abuse by, by a local artist or somebody like that. Say that again?
Some of your neighbors.
Yes, ma'am. But...
Present company excluded.
Not, not your neighbors, yeah.
I figured we'd be digging Mr. Halliburton out of the bush, day one.
Ken, what are you doing at night? Going around Satan?
Mr. Blomley, what else did we miss?
I think that was the last item that, that I had, unless I missed something. Ms. Smith will keep me on my toes if I did.
So the six-foot fence...
Is wanted before?
Yes, yes. And we're, and we're working on a neighborhood meeting in time so that we can, that we can have that before the May 7th public hearing. If, if y'all wish to schedule it for May 7th, and based on the feedback that, that you've given and that the applicant has given back, I think it sounds, it sounds like we'll be able to bring you back a revised plan in time for the May 7th public hearing, looking at the applicants.
So if there are any more comments, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and prove. Mr. Stan?
Set a public hearing for May 7th?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Stand.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. All right, we are moving on to staff reports and other business. Mr. Blomley, what do we got?
I have none to do.
Oh. Goodness, okay. All right. If we have none, then we stand adjourned. Thank y'all.